Get us started, so.
I will tell you that when they start, that one of the dads is gonna step around and video tape.
Oh yeah, that's totally fine.
He asked if you have permission to come through the game, I said yes.
That's great.
Good evening. I'd like to call the regularly scheduled meeting of the Waterloo Community Schools Board of Education to order and ask that you all join me in a moment of silence. Thank you, and will you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You guys, I love the fact that I can hear young students speaking the pledge. It's awesome, it makes me very happy, so we'll get to you guys in just one more minute here. Yep, there you guys, we'll be ready for you in just a minute, we have a couple other items to get through first, so Jessie Knight is gonna read our mission statement this evening.
Waterloo Schools Community commits to a comprehensive system of education and support to ensure that each and every student will graduate, prepare for college, career, and citizenship as evidenced by continuing education, pursuing a career path, and contributing to a community.
Thank you Jessie. The next item on our agenda then is information from individuals and delegations, and I'm just checking this evening to see if there's anyone here who wishes to address the board. We do have a public hearing on the Orange Elementary property as well later in our agenda, so I'm just checking to see if anybody else is here this evening. Alrighty, then we'll move on to that public hearing, and I would like at this point to declare the public hearing open. And ask if there are any comments. Alright, then seeing none, I would entertain a motion to close the hearing. And a second.
Second.
And this requires a roll call vote, so I'm gonna start down here to my left, Jessie Knight.
Yes.
Angie Weekly.
Yes.
Sue Flynn.
Yes.
Rhonda McCraina. Mike Kinsey, excuse me. Lyle Schmidt. Shanley McNally, Chair votes aye, and the hearing is now closed, thank you. That takes us then to the next item on our agenda, which is Exhibit B, the one you guys were all here for, which is for our Kingsley Elementary students that are here this evening, and I'm not sure, I know we have Robin Lesz in the audience, is Angela here too? Oh, there you are Angela, sorry. Do you guys wanna start, are your students gonna start? Robin, will you make sure that that button, there's a little push button.
Hi.
There now, thank you.
I'm Robin Lesz from Kingsley Elementary, and this is our girls-only team. We are excited that we have three teams at Kingsley, a girls-only team, a boys-only team, and a girls' and boys' team. Two of our teams are going to the Ames competition this weekend, and the third team should be there too. They're just gonna tell you, present for you their presentation. Their project was to get more books for the school. The whole theme of the Lego Leagues this year was animal allies, and so they're doing, they're trying to get more nonfiction animal books in Kingsley Elementary.
Alright guys, take it away.
This is our team of 4th and 5th grade girls. We knew, we worked as buzzy as bees for this day. We knew immediately we couldn't do any type of project without seeking first to understand what our peers knew about animals. On the class Chromebooks, we surveyed the 141 4th and 5th grade students at Kingsley. We also asked several questions concerning their sources of information. The results showed that our students are a bunch of bookworms who want to have more animal books. Our goal is to get more nonfiction animal books for the school and classroom library.
About seventy percent of the students we surveyed had an interest in reading nonfiction animal books. We counted all the animal books in the 4th and 5th grade classrooms and our school library. Holy cow. When we, when we finally finished counting, we discovered that our libraries only have ninety-two nonfiction animal books. Total. Our school does not have the koala vacations to meet our students' needs.
Hold your horses, we're not done. We also had to question the survey about which animals interested the students. About thirty-five percent of the kids are interested in reading more about Panthers. Other animals they're interested in are monkeys, penguins, and polar bears. We were dog tired when we were done with our work.
We counted books in classrooms. We talked to individual teachers about the survey results. Fifty-one percent of the students feel that Kingsley's school library does not have enough animal books. Seventy-four percent feel that their classroom libraries don't either. Not only do the kids want more, so do the teachers. When we counted what we had available, we found that Kingsley only has eight-hundred-and-eighty animal books. We realized this is nothing to monkey around with, and we have a lot of work to do.
We learned from the survey that kids really want to learn more about dolphins. When we researched how many books our entire school owned, we found only twenty-one dolphin books in the entire school. Two classrooms in the entire school only had one nonfiction animal book. Luckily, Ms. Reginald's book was a dolphin book. That's a fish out of water. The teachers literally told us they want more nonfiction animal books. Ms. Smith said, "I wish I had the time and money to go get more nonfiction animal books."
So we decided to take the bull by the horns.
A little birdie of a coach named Robin told us we should consult our school's leader of the pack, Ms. Dietz. Ms. Dietz steered us to a grant opportunity to purchase nonfiction animal books for the Kingsley students. Mallory and Johnson got help from Jean Sealan from the Volunteer Center of Cedar Valley to write a grant for books we didn't monkey around. We asked for $1,000 to purchase four-hundred-and-ninety-four nonfiction animal books.
Kingsley Elementary is our circle of control. We knew if we received the McElroy Grant Art Project would have affected more than three-hundred-and-seventy-five students in our school. We found out in mid-December that we did not receive the McElroy Grant. At first, we thought it was a cat-tastrophe, but we dried our crocodile tears because we know there is more than one way to skin a cat. Alexis and Sydney wrote a proposal to the Kingsley PTO asking for $2,000 to buy animal books for our school. We will find out about this funding in February.
We will keep trying until the cows come home.
This is Hannah.
I have butterflies in my stomach.
She wants you to know that Kingsley Elementary is in the doghouse because students want to learn about animals, but the school needs more books. She also wants you to know that we were as busy as beavers researching one-hundred-and-twenty-seven different nonfiction animal books sold at Barnes &amp; Noble. Our hope is to continue finding additional ways to find funds for these books. Keep listening. Other resources we can apply to get more animal books are the Cedar Valley United Way, Waterloo Community School Foundations, and Kingsley PTO. We wanna get hundreds of animal books. Sorry we seem to have ants in our pants, but we're just super excited about our group project to get more nonfiction animal books for our school. See you later, alligators.
Do you wanna know more about what we've done?
Okay, okay, come on up, girls.
I like to call these girls Personality Plus, and we deal with it on a daily basis.
Oh, so now it's our time to ask questions, right? Yes. Before I get to the questions, can I also just acknowledge, there's a couple other people here, I wanna just acknowledge your other coach, Stacy Mills, can you wave? And I think you've got a couple mentors that work with you in the back, am I correct? Are they both here, is Craig here?
No.
Anybody, those guys here, okay. I just can't see everybody, there you go, gotcha, okay. We just wanna thank them too for being awesome support, because you guys would be a lot to corral, I have a feeling. It's right up my alley, let me tell ya.
Okay, I would like each of you to tell us your name and your favorite animal, and what grade you are in school, and what do you wanna be when you grow up? Four questions. Like a hyena.
My name is Nora Nazri, I am a 4th grader at Kingsley Elementary. My favorite animal is a penguin, and I wanna be an author when I grow up.
Hi, my name is Isabel Rand, I am a 4th grader here at Kingsley. My favorite animal is a jellyfish, and I wanna be a teacher when I grow up.
Hello, my name is Alexis Staima, I'm a 4th grader at Kingsley. My favorite animal is a dog, and I want to be an engineer when I grow up.
My name is Tessa Pedri, I am in 4th grade. My favorite animal is a ring-tailed lemur, and I wanna be a magician when I grow up.
My name, my name is Natalie Schmacki, I am a 4th grader here at Kingsley, and my favorite animal is a cat, and when I grow up, I'd like to be a professional swimmer.
My name is Hannah Williams, my favorite animal is a hamster, and when I grow up, I wanna be a vet.
My name is Sydney Grant, I am a 4th grader at Kingsley. My favorite animal is a red panda, and I still don't know what I wanna be when I grow up.
Hi, my name is Jocelyn McGilgan, I'm a 5th grader at Kingsley. My favorite animal is a cheetah, and I wanna be a veterinarian when I grow up.
Hello, my name is Mallory Mills, and I am in 5th grade, and I want to be a surgeon when I grow up, and my favorite animal is a cheetah.
They have, when they found out they didn't get the grant, they needed to do some more work going forward toward Ames, and so we did have a couple girls do some research, well, they all did some research, and then we did, wrote a proposal to the Kingsley. But tell them what surprising fact we found out on our second survey about the kids with library cards at Kingsley.
We found out from our survey that most of the kids don't have library cards.
So, at the read-in, we are going to be giving out library cards to the people that don't have any.
Our read-in is where all of the students at Kingsley are asked to attend to our school in the gym, where they can bring books from home and read, and just like, meet up with their friends.
They're also allowed to be in their pajamas.
Oh, pajamas, nice. Board members, anybody else have any questions for these precocious young women?
Well, I wanted to, did you, did you have, are you all?
Are you guys done? I didn't mean to interrupt you. I can't see behind that monitor, so I can't, there you go.
I'll let you continue if you'd like.
Um, we also can't, we have donuts and stuff to drink there.
Very nice.
Alright.
You wanna go ahead?
Do you have any more questions?
Well, no questions, just comments, if that's okay? I wanted to congratulate you all, and let's take a second just to give them a hand. So, let me just, I don't, can y'all hear me okay? 'Cause I can't, okay? Let me just explain to you why you all are phenomenal, okay? So, you may not have ever been inside of a college oral communications classroom, but your presentation skills were awesome, okay? That's number one. Okay, your verbal communication skills were awesome. Number two, your research skills, and you also may not have ever been inside of a dissertation presentation, but the quantitative, the pie charts, and all of those things are things that people who work on their doctorate have to do. And so I was very impressed with your overall presentation skills, the research that you did, the use of surveys, and the reporting. So, from an academic standpoint, I'm very, very proud and impressed with you all. So, knock-knock. Cows go. No, silly, cows go moo. And I'd like to. And, and I'd like to make a donation to your book project, okay, thank you.
And one last thing, ladies, I wanna say, I'm very impressed that all of you are here tonight, because that's no small feat to get your whole group in front of somebody, I know that's a hard thing, and I really appreciate you all taking the time, we all do, to come out on a Monday night when you're not normally supposed to be here, we really appreciate you doing that tonight, so, thank you very much, and you're gonna get to Ames, don't you worry. Good, don't worry.
Thank you.
That was great, I, I'm kind of a nonfiction person, so I appreciate that. The only thing I don't understand is why rats didn't make the.
They might have, yeah, exactly, so. Alright, we'll let them head about their way, before we move on to the next item on our agenda, I do wanna make just a brief announcement this evening, both our superintendent and one of our board members, we have a mandatory meeting for our 8th grade families this evening, of which our superintendent will be presenting, and one of our board members has an 8th grader, and so they will be leaving us in about an hour, and I just wanna let our public know that when they get up and leave, I haven't offended them, they're just on their way out the door, so, with that, we will move on to our consent agenda this evening. And the items on the consent agenda consist of, the minutes of the December 12, 2016 regular board meeting, I can get it up here, personnel appointments and adjustments, bills due and payable and bills paid between board meetings, and labor negotiations team. Can I get those, actually first, are there any items that members wish to have removed? Then seeing none, can I get those items on the table, please? Thanks Jessie, and a second? Second. Then all those in favor of approval of the consent agenda items C, D, E, and F, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. That takes us to the next item on our agenda, which is item G, and that is, the recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve the Old Orange Elementary School demolition project and publish a notice to bidders. Thank you, Mike moved and Sue seconded, and is there any discussion? I know Michael Coughlin's here for that, or I know we on the facilities might be able to answer questions if anybody has.
Do we have a ballpark estimate? What the cost might be?
No. This is just a notice to take bids, so.
I think we have some ideas in our minds based on previous projects, but if we say.
Fair enough.
If we say, then we would tip our hands, so I think we'll hold off on that.
Yeah, exactly.
Fair enough.
And one thing I wanna say, you know, I live out that direction, so you all know that I drive by those, that building a lot, and that it, we have removed the asbestos and everything, and we are very anxious to move forward a little bit, even ahead of schedule, and that's why we're looking at going ahead and going out for bid this early in January, because, you know, the building doesn't look the greatest, the windows are out, and we know that, and so we are working hard and diligently to take care of that and, and get that building down.
Assuming that the board approves the project tonight.
Exactly, right, I was gonna say, that would depend on the vote, that hasn't happened yet, so, exactly.
Just to note, it might be good to inform the public that one of the reasons we do this in the wintertime is that this is some work that can be done during the winter, and actually, we could get a better price, because a lot of contractors are not working on other projects during the winter, so it's advantageous to do this, this time of year.
And I just wanted to add too, that again, I think this is a true sign of the district's diligence to, living up to their word, you know, that this is a building that we built a new building, and it has not been there, what, they've been in Orange, what, three?
Three years.
Three years? So, we are getting that a lot sooner than some of our other buildings down, and I think it is following course that we build, and then we take down the old, and we have promised to do that to the neighborhoods, and I think we are living up to that promise, so I just wanted to thank the administration, the district for allowing that to continue to happen.
We should probably also note what's gonna happen to this property?
We don't know yet, it goes to the city.
That's what I was getting at, is it will become city property.
Yeah, it was part of our trade with the land swap for the bus garage, so, not sure what their plans are, we can go to a city council meeting and maybe find out. Yeah, they meet right now, exactly, so, at five, right? Alright, is there anything further then? Great, then all those in favor of approving the recommendation, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. Great, then that takes us next to item H on our agenda, and that is the 2017-18 High School Planning Guide and Course Catalog, and the recommended motion here, I have to get to the bottom of my exhibit, is that the Board of Education approve the 2017-2018 High School Planning Guide Course Catalog.
Some move.
Thanks Jessie, and a second?
Second.
Great, and discussion, I know that we have Crystal Buzza and Debbie Lee here, thank you both for being here, and I'm sure we'll have some questions after you guys present to us.
We always count on that, right?
Yep.
So here we are, with a High School Planning Guide, and there were some very major changes in it this year. We hoped that the exhibit actually highlighted those major changes for you, but we, I wanna run by, run through just a couple of those with you, and then we'll entertain the questions. I also wanna introduce a few people who are out in the audience as well. So, one of the first things that I wanted just to talk about is the huge collaborative effort that goes into the High School Planning Guide. This is not something that Crystal and I sit at our desks and scheme up and, and say, "Hey, let's do this," or "Let's do that." We actually bring the teachers in who are the content specialists, they know their content, they know what is needed by the students in their classrooms, so we bring those department chairs in, and we ask them to take information back to their teachers and to have conversations about what are those changes that really need to happen? What courses do we need to add that drive our students further into the 21st century and those rigorous learning opportunities? And then what courses are we just not using anymore, or we don't need to be using, or we just need to take off the plate? So there were some major, there was major work this year done in some of those areas. So, the collaborative part of it, I think, is very, very important, and I hope that you get a sense of that as we go through this. Of course, there are different kinds of things that we do, like we adjust course numbers, we adjust the skid numbers, we adjust narratives, if the content just needs a little bit of tweaking or something, that is always done, and I don't always highlight those, or we would have fifty-five pages probably in the exhibit, and that's not necessary. There was a change in retaking a course, and that is on page six, and, and I noted that in the exhibit, but I wanted to highlight that for you. We are adding on, using our Edge Annuity online courses, another way for students to pass a course if they have shown an almost that they have passed. Sometimes we have students who might miss a major project or a major assignment, they get a big ol' zero on that, and it brings down all of their other grades. We are trying to move slowly toward a more competency-based approach, so we said, if the students have between a fifty-five and fifty-nine percent in their final grade, and they choose to want to take the cumulative test that accompanies a corresponding course in our list of online courses, they can take that test. If they get a seventy percent or above on that test, they will pass then the course with a C. If they get between sixty, sixty-nine percent, they will pass the course with a D. Even if they ace that cumulative test, they will not get an A for that retake on the course. So, that's a new practice, it's not in policy, so we can, we can put those guidelines into being. That was a suggestion by one of our principals, we had conversation about that, and it's just another way for our students to be able to approach showing that they have shown competencies. The Edge Annuity courses, the E2020 courses, they align with standards, and we continually work on customizing those, that's a new program, software program for us this year. But we did want to bring that to your attention, so that you know we are doing everything we can on a continuum of what we believe is right, to give kids a chance to show what they know and what they can apply. We think that's very important. We are adjusting the ELL courses, one of the big things we did with those was we noted on the ELL courses which ones count for graduation credit in that content area, and there are implications for that, and we meet all of those implications. The other thing is, there were questions about some of the ELL courses and how they work within the Regents Admission Index. So I had a great conversation with Representative Jason Pontius from the Regents, and he advised us on what we could do with our course numbers to be able to make it happen that some of the ELL courses will now count in the RAI, the Regents Admission Index. And that's a big plus for our ELL students, and that's, for me, it's a big equity issue as well. So now they can take those courses, and what they're learning is, the course content is the same as our general course, but we are using specific ELL strategies in there to help those students pass those courses. So that will set them up to be able to go to the universities, and we thought that was really important as well. There are also format changes I wanted to bring to your attention. All of the previous career, career clusters and pathways, we moved that section to the back to act more as a reference section rather than be upfront, because it kind of got caught in the way of trying to get to the courses, and so we thought that would be a really good move to make, and we've gotten real positive response from that. And we also then moved two of Waterloo's really important high school signature courses or signature pathways right up front. So, when we get past some of the narratives in the front, what you see right away is the Waterloo Career Center, and then immediately after that, you see the International Baccalaureate courses, and we pulled, all the Waterloo Career Center courses are all in that section. We also, all of the IB courses, we pulled out of the content areas, and we put those and streamlined those as well right there, so they're easier. and streamlined those as well right there, so they're easier to see. So I think those are really very important format changes that I wanted to highlight for you. And then we get down to the content changes. And one of the most important content changes is in the area of science. And so because of the huge changes in that area, I wanted to introduce you to the four people sitting here behind me. So on your left would be Alex Conyers, and then Rod Wallace, Anjali Myers, and of course, Angela Hewitt. And Rod and Alex are the two department chairs for East and West High. Anjali is our curricular leader in the K-12 District Science Committee, and Angela Hewitt really is the coordinator, facilitator, or director, whatever we call her, across our science programming. And so they are instrumental in pulling the ideas together and pulling the teachers together around this. The decisions that were made in science were not my decisions, you need to know that. Rod and Alex took lots of information back from the committees, and they kept meeting with their PLC science groups at the high school level over the course of about a year, year and a half, almost two years. Angela and Anjali worked with them in their agendas and with the professional development that they provided the teachers. But they would come up with the ideas. Here are the new standards for science, next generation science standards. And how is this gonna change our current science programming? What do we need to do? Can we bundle these into units? What curriculum do we need to develop or go purchase in regard to these new standards? And how do we wrap these science standards into a correct course sequence? These are exactly the same challenges that other school districts in Iowa have been facing and have been dealing with. So they worked and worked and worked on this. They take the information to their teachers, and then they pull it back into the committee. They take out more ideas and pull it back, back and forth. We call that the accordion model, and they used it really well. So what they came down to was looking at what's the best course sequence for our high school students that engage them in the standards in a rigorous inquiry approach to science. And this is what they came up with. My job was to ask them the difficult questions to help them think about things maybe they didn't think about, and of course, I loved that. That was great. I think they came up with one of the most ingenious creative plans that I have ever seen, and I love it. So hats off to these guys behind me. They're standing behind me when most of the work, I was standing behind them. They're the ones who are doing the work. I just happen to be telling you about it. So I want you to understand that and acknowledge them. So this is a new era.
Yeah.
I'll show you that in just a minute.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So it is a new era and approach. It's practices and content, not just content. And what I, you are so good. If you look at page one in your high school planning guide, not Roman numeral one, but just the number one. What you see on that page is our current programming. That stands for the class of 2018, 19, and 20. So this is not anything different than you've seen before. So if you turn the page over to page two and three, the top of three, what you will see then is starting with next year's freshman class, that's the class of 2021. Everything is the same here except science. In science, what you'll notice is that the ninth grade course is Earth and Space Science. The 10th grade course is Biology, that is exactly the same as what we normally have had. And then at the junior level, for most of the students at the junior level, they will choose one of four combinations. So they will choose Physical Science A and B, that's a full-year course, or they will choose Physical Science A, which is more physics-based, and then a full year of Chemistry, depending on what their interest area is, what their career path might be. Or they will choose Physical Science B, which is more Chemistry-based, and Physics, a full year of Physics. Or if they're really deep into science, they will choose a full year of Chemistry and a full year of Physics. Now, any one of those courses will push the students to a college level, fully prepared to engage in college courses. So it's very important for us to note, this is dependent on what the student chooses and what their career path and their thinking is at that time. So next year, our new curriculum will be in the area of Earth and Space Science. Then we have two years to develop the curriculum in that, for that junior year, the Physical Science, Chemistry, and Physics.
The Anatomy of Physiology, where's that?
That stays. That's an elective course. We still have all of our other science electives, although in the exhibit, you will see we have deleted some courses because they are embedded into the Earth Science, like the astronomy, meteorology. Those are part of our Earth Science, did I say, Earth and Space Science course. And then we're keeping Geology and Ecology for a couple more years for our current 9th, 10th, and 11th graders, because they may need those as electives. And we'll keep looking at, when do we need to delete those, what do we need to add? Okay? So that is a huge change. Yes?
Question on that. So, you know, reading through here, we're seeing that, that eighth graders currently taking those advanced science classes, they're not going to get credit for those next year?
That is a good question, and that was the next point, and that was in the exhibit. So you need to understand what is happening at that middle school level in conjunction of how it links to the high school then. We know that with the new standards, they are specifically grade-based. Sixth grade standards, seventh grade standards, eighth grade science standards. Our students have to engage in those specific standards. In the past, they were grade span, which gave us lots of wiggle room to be able to move them and adjust them and all of that. Well, it's a different story now. So our eighth grade students have to engage in the eighth grade standards. We are learning what those standards mean and the curriculum units that are being prepared for those. We are temporarily eliminating a science course at the middle school level that is a high school course. We have to do that. We can't have students taking their eighth grade course because of those standards and an Earth Science course at that eighth grade level. We're not prepared for that yet. What we are planning on is that one to two years, hopefully, we'll start the conversation next spring. We'll look at, how did the seventh grade curriculum, what are the units like? How did they go this year? How can we compact those to one semester? How did the eighth grade units in curriculum go? How can we compact that to a semester? So that the plan would be to build a seventh grade advanced science course that embraces both the seventh grade and the eighth grade standards on a faster pace. That sets the eighth graders up then to be able to take the Earth Science. Now, when they go into ninth grade next year, we do have an advanced Earth and Space Science for them to get involved in. So...
Current eighth graders. They're, they're taking that right now.
Current eighth graders that are taking Physical Science now. In addition, the Physical Science that they are taking this year will count as their Physical Science when they are juniors. We, these guys thought of everything, and do you want to add anything to that? Did I get that right?
I, I do have a question as well. So, and maybe I'm just not in this loop, but the last student that I helped that was at Advanced in Science did not even take that ninth grade level, an eighth grade, in ninth grade, just tested and started in Biology, and then went into a career in Science. And that was years ago, because he's 29 now. But I'm just saying, is that, is that still an option, if their aptitude is so high that, like, that level of science would not be enough, or will not get them into? I had a couple friends in college who I had to tutor in Physics because they didn't offer it at their high school, or they didn't get a chance to take it because of their curriculum. So...
There are possibilities and ways that we can help students accelerate, and we have eighth graders who are taking summer courses before their ninth grade to accelerate there. But I'm going to actually ask you to just stay with us on this, because we are learning new standards, and we are preparing new curriculum. And so those answers on how best we can serve students are gonna happen through the year next year, when we are deeply embedded in all of this new curriculum and the new standards. We can individually accelerate students, but we need to have knowledge that they currently have met those specific standards that we expect them to. And so we have to be able to, to prepare that, and to be able to say, well, here are the, here are the types of assessment or performances, or whatever we need, that we can say, yes, they've met this, and we can push them on. Bear with us on that. This is probably, this is a lot different than new math and new literacy standards.
I just have to...
This is a whole new way of doing science.
I have to say this out loud, because I am unbelievably anxious at looking at this, but knowing that Mr. Wallace and that Angela both participated in this is bringing me a little bit of ease, because I know how well that they have prepared the kids that I have worked with to go into careers in math and science. So I just, that is really helping me, but I am, I don't know if you can tell, I can, I'm anxious a little bit.
Well, let me help you understand that. Tomorrow morning when we wake up, this is all not gonna, doesn't have to be ready.
Right.
Okay? So they are working on the Earth and Space Science curriculum, which will be ready for next year. And then the next two years, they will continue to work on upgrading our Biology, which is at the 10th grade, same thing, just upping it to what the expectation is in the new standards. But they also, with all of the changes at that junior level, we have two years to do that. And these folks are talented enough, they will knock that out, hands down, without a problem.
So, did I understand that correctly, though? You're saying that the current eighth graders that are taking classes will get credit their junior year?
Yes.
Okay. Does that, do we need to communication out those, those families, so they know what's...
That's being communicated, it's in the board exhibit, it's being communicated through the teachers, and as the counselors, I have met six meetings last week and one more this week. I have met with all of the high school administrators, all of the middle school and high school counselors, and I'm meeting with the middle school administrators on Wednesday, and we are explaining all of this to them. The key people in that conversation are the administrators and especially the counselors, because they're the ones who help the students understand that. The counselors, Dr. Lindemann will be working with the parents in those meetings. At the same time, we will be sending those, high school counselors go out to the middle schools, and they work with the middle schools, the eighth graders in getting scheduling ready for next year. And we also have the career coordinators who go out and follow the counselors and have conversations about the career academies and careers and career clusters and all of that with the middle school students as well. So there is a huge campaign going on that supports this in regard to communication. Great question, and I think we've got that covered, but you listen, and if we don't, we will make sure that we do.
If I could add too, we have a great leverage point with the District Science Committee, because it has representation from every building, every grade level, and they've been part of the formation of getting the next generation science standards to the forefront. So this isn't an isolated committee working in a small, closed room. This has been an ongoing dialogue over two years of how that we can best make sure that our students not only have a strong STEM foundation for career readiness, but also have the high expectations that the universities have regarding science readiness. So let me just commend the Science Committee, not only of the communication process, but also of the, the difficult work of, of getting this up to the forefront and ready to go.
And Dr. McNulty, that's a great point. My next question was, is there a community college liaison on this Science Committee?
Not on the committee, but we are in constant communication with them in other areas, and I would like to see that happen in the future. We kind of had to start down here on the foundational level at the beginning, so. That's a really good idea. I like that idea. So we can take that, see how we can integrate with them and...
It appears all this change is, is generated by the official adoption in August 2015 of the Iowa Core Science Standards. Did I unwittingly approve this?
No, that was approval from the state level. The State Board approved those as the Iowa Science Standards, and we follow the Iowa Science Standards.
Well, okay. My question is, have we, are the standards even defined enough, or have we studied them enough to understand whether they're warranted? Whether we even want to follow that standard?
Well, Mr. Schmidt, at this point in time, I could say, yes, that was, those were all fared it out. They were addressed, they were, public comment was open for public comment. That was a long approval process on the state's end. Once they are approved, we are then by law committed to enacting those. But we also agreed 100% that these are the best standards that we've ever had. This is the right pathway for science.
Even though they're not all defined?
I believe they are defined.
I thought some of the courses are still being developed.
The standards are defined. We get to then decide the courses around those standards.
Put our Waterloo stamp on them.
So we studied, we Waterloo school representatives, studied those standards and decided they're right on the mark?
Yes, we believe that they are.
Hmm. Because it's just another move towards Common Core, and as you know, it's pretty controversial. Some of the objections are warranted, some are not, many are not. But I don't think this is just something that you just blanket, adopt what some other group said. We just still have local control of some kind, so we don't necessarily need to adopt these standards, do we?
Yes.
Actually, yes, right. That is, yep, the Department of Ed, when they adopted them, they became the Iowa curriculum. And so how those are, how those standards are taught, the instructional strategies, the assessments that use, are used to measure, that is local. But the standards are a state, so regardless of whatever district you go to in the state of Iowa, those are the standards that we're going, going to be teaching, yes.
In the board exhibit a year ago, and the only reason I know this is because I had it out last week looking at it, the board exhibit last year gave a kind of a heads-up. When we did the high school planning, there was a paragraph in there about the NGSS, the Next Generation Science Standards, and that we wouldn't be changing science for the current year, but that we would be bringing a lot of change for the following year, which is next school year, 2017-18. So this has been on our radar for quite a while, and our teachers have spent time in professional development. They have spent time looking and dissecting and unpacking the standards and looking at them and what they mean. And so the standards are the goal line. That's where we're headed. It's our local control to figure out how to get our students to meet that expectation.
So who determines whether our local curriculum meets the Common Core?
We determine that.
Okay.
And that's the work that the teachers under Anjali and Angela have been working on so diligently for the last nearly two years. First, it was, we have to understand the standards before we can understand how to utilize them, how to get kids engaged in them to meet that. And eventually, there should be an assessment that aligns with those as well. And so these are, you know, we're just in the middle of, right now, of saying, what standards are they? How can we bundle those together to create units? And how are we going to assess to make sure that we are assessing exactly what that unpacked standard is, is intended? It's a lot of work. Curriculum development is tedious, mind-bending work. It's really big. So it takes time to do that. And we have built the time in. It's been a slow, steady process to ensure that the understanding is there.
And the reason I'm a little nervous about this is, science more than any other area lends itself to indoctrination as opposed to true, true science. We've seen that in multiple areas, so, so how do we know that these courses don't become indoctrination?
Well, number one is they are not traditional lecture courses. They are actually engaging. Students get to work through the inquiry method. They are posing questions. They are looking at evidence and data. They are figuring things out on their own. I can tell you, it's just such a different type of, of science than what we have been able to, across the board, bring to our students. So this work is also being done at the middle school and the elementary level, paralleling what the high school is doing. Does anybody want to comment about the type of instruction that is happening that would be able to address those questions? Yeah. Here's what I'd like to do. I would like to invite you, is the pilot still going on with Physical Science in your buildings? Is it over, or it's done at ease, but it's...
We have about six days left.
Okay. Mm-hmm. Okay.
We have about six days left.
Okay. Mm-hmm. Okay.
Come up here, Alex. You can sit right now.
We have piloted units as well. And this is just not, let's go out and buy whatever we see first. Units have been piloted, teachers are vetting those. And there's, again, it's, we're not in a hurry to do any kind of purchasing of support resources. The curriculum units and guides will be written first, and then we go find those resources. But Alex, go ahead and address the board, please.
I mean, I just, I guess in order to answer Mr. Schmidt's question, I need to know what he qualifies as indoctrination.
Bias against the use of fossil fuels.
Okay, that is part of it. One of the standards does involve human impacts to Earth that does not necessarily have to be taken in a fossil fuel negative sort of climate. So the, the standard is not written from the perspective that fossil fuels are negative. It is written from the perspective that humans have an impact on their environment, though.
Which is another conjecture.
Okay. What about global warming, I think is another question.
That, that does fall under the, like, human impacts. I wouldn't say that I have exclusively focused on carbon dioxide, not how that impacts the environment, but also nitrogen, the, the change of use of land, for instance, for, for like urban areas, how that also impacts the environment, the building of roads, the, the removal of prairie for agriculture. I mean, they both have positive and negative impacts, and I definitely work to highlight both aspects in my classroom.
And that's, that's what I was going to say, is that we teach our students critical thinking, so we provide both sides of the coin. I would imagine that they would, you know, highlight both.
Yeah, I would like to believe that I'm not indoctrinating my students.
And, and that is, that's the drive, and around the standards, the standards are not open-ended, but they allow for the inquiry approach so that students can ask the questions. So you may have some students who might believe this or might believe that, and as we dig into that and, and we see what are the hypotheses, what is the data, what conclusions can we draw from that? That's really that, that whole scientific inquiry that, again, it's not just content. Our, our traditional science was based only in content. These, this science approach and these standards are practices and content.
I, I thank, I thank you, and I just think it's important that our students are offered both sides of the coin so that if their parents ask, then we as educators will be able to address that very real concern that some people might have. So thank you.
So does it address questions such as, how will world food production, how does science play a role in increasing world food production such that it is proportional to the population change?
Yeah, definitely. That's a human impact on the environment as we have increased crop yields and the potential to grow food on Earth.
How are the, the books, have you, resources? You, you mentioned that you would be looking into resources for each course as you get closer to it. So will you be bringing those to us specifically, or will those be chosen by your group? Yeah?
The teachers have started looking at some resources, but when we talk about resources, it doesn't necessarily mean a textbook. My posture has always been, if we can provide resources that are not textbooks and it's the perfect resource, or a resource that we can supplement, that's the way we will go. So there, the books, the textbooks themselves have not quite caught up with the standards, so we're not in a hurry to, to go out and spend thousands and thousands of dollars on textbooks. We're also looking at what the old term would be, kits, or resources that are pulled together in one unit, and we're looking at some of those as well. So rather than a textbook, we would look at this resource kit, which guides the teachers in, into engaging the students, students in specific activities that drive the kids into those standards and those opportunities for learning. We would be bringing those kinds of resources to you. We've bought some just to pilot and to look at, but a large adoption always comes through the board for approval. And if it's your desire, we can actually set up and show you those before those are purchased. And we always do sift those or vet those through criteria. It's not just, I like the pictures in this book, so let's buy this. It's, do they meet this criteria? And we rank those kinds of resources. Angela has that, she has been using that or will be using that with the teachers. The teachers make that final decision. It's not up to me. And we can send you, I just asked Angela, we have copies of the Next Generation Science Standards, and we can, in the next week, get those all sent out to you if you would like to have a set of those. They are online, if you want to look at them online, just Google NGSS or Next Generation Science Standards. But we have those printed out in books as well, and we can give those to you next week, by next week.
One last question. Is the Iowa Core Science Standards a derivative of a national standards?
The Next Generation Science Standards are the next thing to national standards, but I don't think there's one set of national standards, Angela.
NGSS were developed by 26 states in the nation. They were state-driven, they are not federal standards.
Right.
Iowa was one of the lead states in developing the Next Generation Science Standards. Iowa Core Science Standards are based on NGSS. So Iowa adopted the performance expectations of the NGSS, they didn't adopt the entire NGSS.
And Angela, that was a clarification I wondered about, the stamp. I talked about the Waterloo stamp, about how we then develop, the standards are here, and then how we develop the curriculum and how we get to the standard. But as I understand it, that's also the way it is for the, and, I'm going to say that wrong, NCSS, that those, the NGSS, that Iowa also had a percentage of their own, so that Iowas don't necessarily match everybody, the other 26, that they had, part of that was their own to create. Am I correct in that?
Iowa took what was already in place with NGSS. NGSS is just a broader document that provides additional information that Iowa chose not to adopt.
Okay.
More information on cross-cutting concepts, the science and engineering practices. Iowa just adopted the performance expectation, which is what students should be able to demonstrate at the conclusion of learning.
Okay. Thank you.
One other question, might you want to ask her about science before she gets out of my class?
I don't think anything more on science necessarily, unless Lila, do you have any more on science?
Uh, no.
Okay.
Thank you. And thank you to the science teachers and to the leaders of the science groups. They're very important people in this process. So the next piece I wanted to highlight, and this is the last one, just to let you know, is the Waterloo Career Center. And so Crystal's going to talk a little bit about that. And I'm going to tell you, being able to be deep into curriculum in this district, it has been so invigorating and fun for me to watch, the progress that has been made with science and also with the career and technical education. That's, that's really awesome, both of it.
Both pieces.
So if you turn to page 34 in the Plan of Study Guide, you'll see the first page for the Waterloo Career Center. And we do have it broken down into five pathways. So it includes the three new pathways that we'll have for next fall. And as you'll note, any of the courses with-
That's, do you need 16?
Oh, 17, sorry.
16 and 17.
Yep. I think 34 is where maybe it started in the old guide, I don't know.
It's English now.
16 and 17.
So with this particular, the next page, you'll kind of see, we tried to break it in, here's advanced manufacturing, here's digital graphics. With this draft, you'll notice we have some call-out boxes. There are some classes that we are calling our buddy classes, where on Monday, Wednesday, Friday, they'll take one class, and then on Tuesday, Thursday, there'll be a complementing class that will be slightly different, but within the same pathway. And that's just because if they are a Hawkeye class, they might not require as many lecture hours or lab hours. And the way we have it built in is we have a lot more time, they're 90-minute class periods that students meet for every day. So we have the flexibility of offering or introducing something new, which is a really nice thing. The other thing that we are very excited about being able to offer is, next year for the digital graphics and then for the early childhood education, we are going to bundle one of the classes with an English credit. So students need four years of English to graduate, and usually around their senior year, they pick an elective. And this will allow students to get a core credit in addition to a career elective credit while they're at the Career Center. And so we're hoping to expand that more. We are really going to test that out and see how it works next year. But any way we can help students get their core credits along with elective credits helps them graduate. So we felt that was a really good thing to add in. So questions about the Career Center?
I just was wondering, I was curious in here, looking how we have offered the CAPS for Cedar Falls in our online, are they offering our Career Center in theirs?
Correct. So we've been having a number of conversations with Cedar Falls and other surrounding districts on how we can share programming. And so they're very interested in our Career Center program. They do a little bit of a different way of introducing their program to their board. We bring our Plan of Study to the board. I don't believe that is a policy that they have to do, but they are planning on second semester, we will allow our students to be able to participate in the CAPS program, and their students will be able to participate in our Career Center programming. So we have a lot of meetings to get together. It'll be bringing our counselors and their counselors together to really figure out the logistics, and then a sharing agreement would likely probably come before the board before it's all finalized.
Which I've not mistaken, that's groundbreaking. That's not happened.
It is.
That has not happened since I've been on this board, so it's a pretty big deal, that kind of collaborative effort. I just want to point that out.
So the last thing I want to tell you is just, please note the lists of classes that we have deleted and added in the board exhibit. If there are some specific questions you have about those, I can answer those questions for you either now or later. The one I wanted to highlight is we, because I'm so excited about this one, is in the music program. And we're actually piloting a, a new vocal music course at East High this next semester. And then we've added it into the high school planning guide starting next semester, but we're piloting already. That is called Wings, and it's a vocal music that is based on different types of vocal genres with an emphasis, a heavy emphasis in gospel. And so we believe that it's a course that truly meets some of the cultural needs and in an equity kind of way of thinking. We're excited about that. We also are having current conversations, although the, the class has not been added and won't be added right now. But we're also talking about a drum line. Again, getting, you know, getting some kids who wouldn't take music in any other way, but they're out there marching around, drumming on the drums and all of that kind of stuff in parades and in other organizations. And so we're looking at what the cost might be for that, what, how we would get that started. And if we can figure all of that out, we're going to try to pilot it maybe second semester next, next year. That's the goal. So that's not in here, but just to tell you that we're trying to be creative and responsive to getting our kids engaged in school and, you know, providing opportunities for them to say, I want to go to school today. So that's the intent, and to honor the cultures that we have, the subcultures that we have in our community. Any other questions?
Is the marching band credit, is that seen in there, is that, is that common in other districts or something that we're kind of-
You know, I don't know if that's common in other districts. The music folks came to me and said, because we have our students going to what I call band camp before school starts for their marching part, and most of the time they are out there on the field at zero hour, we decided that we needed to be able to honor the time that they give and give them a quarter credit, and then they will get their concert band credit that semester as well as their marching band credit. It will be treated a little bit differently between East and West. West High has enough kids that if a student comes in and says, I really want to do concert band, but I'm unable to do the marching band, they actually can choose, or they can do both. At East High, they need all of their band kids to do the marching band at this point in time. That's a growing program, but it's not to the point where we can offer it quite like that. So East High kids, all their band kids will be in that marching program, or West, because there's enough of, I mean, there's so many of them, that we can offer that choice. The goal is for East High students eventually to have that choice as well. At the very bottom, they're going to get credit for it.
Yeah. I think it's good, so I appreciate your-
Thank you.
I agree. That's a good change.
Yep.
Has anything in the IB department changed since everything started with our, with that-
We have, if you go to the exhibit, the list of courses, we are switching out some courses. We have deleted the IB physics, and that was not a gargantuan, exciting, what do I say, a popular course. So students weren't taking that, and we do offer AP physics if they're real interested in that. But what we did was then, we actually added a sports exercise and health science IB course that will become much more popular and has the possibility of connecting in some way to our health science pathway as well. That's, if you look up that course, it's a very interesting course. I would like to take that course if I were still in school. We looked at where are we getting the bang for our buck out of IB? So we switched out and paired back and then added to get what we absolutely needed. So there have been some changes that way.
So within IB, you have-
Do you want to come up here, Shree?
Well, I'm just asking, within IB, there are options of different directions you can go and still be within that curriculum?
Yes, there are.
Okay. And based on popularity is how you choose which ones you're going, or, and also, I suppose with the teachers that are available?
Yeah, that's part of it, too. It's not just on popularity, but they have to have a certain number of courses in each one of their, each one of the IB areas. And then we have to be able to supply the teachers for that, too. And next year, we will not have an IB physics teacher trained to do this.
Thank you.
And we had very teeny tiny, small numbers this year as well. So we believe that the science will be met through other programming.
Any interest in elongating class periods for any curriculum other than the Career Center?
That has not been a conversation on the table at this point in time. I don't know if you're asking me for my personal opinion, but I cannot, we just haven't had that, that conversation. So you're talking about block classes?
Yes.
Mm-hmm. Are you asking me my opinion?
Um, not necessarily. I just wondered if it had been part of the discussion.
No, we have not had that discussion.
You can give me your opinion if you want.
Oh, my gosh. I am so in favor of block classes. I think it gives teachers the amount of time that they need to really let kids dig into that. But that is not something that we would, as district administrators, stand and say, you're going to do this. That needs to rise out of the ranks of the schools themselves and say, we need to do this. We need block scheduling to do this, to do this programming accurately.
Something else that we saw in our travels before we kind of came to the decisions that we did, had to do with combination classes, where you would have a physics class with an, with an English class.
And that's what Crystal was talking about. We have two English classes that are going to be paired up with the digital graphics and the elementary education. So they will be able to take those, now we haven't, they're two separate standalone courses, that's the first step. And eventually, if we can embed those, we can. When we started looking at, there is national curriculum, curriculum out there for instance, algebra and construction, or geometry and construction. So when we get to that point, if that's a pathway, we will look at those curriculums and start embedding that kind of content with those. That's the dream, that's the intent.
So far, it's just the English.
We had to start small and with something that we knew we could get our, our heads and our hands wrapped around. And this will, this should work really well.
So are there two teachers in that classroom?
We think there'll be probably one teacher, we don't have that staff yet. It'll come from somebody currently that we have on staff.
That would be eligible to-
Eligible to teaching.
Yep.
Right. Okay.
Yeah, they have to be endorsed as English.
And I just want to say, I'm, I'm all for a lot of the specialization. I think that's really good and it's attractive. But I want us, I want to be somewhat cautious so that we don't get so specialized, that those students in the middle that we're trying to help graduate, that we don't use up too many of our resources, our human resources, as well as our other technical resources that, you know, I don't know, does that make sense?
Yes, it does make sense.
Right, because we serve all of our kids in-
Right, because, you know, I, I think it's really good with the IB and all those things. It's good to have that specialization. And I, and I truly believe that there is a niche for that, and we, we want to retain those parents and those students, to keep them engaged in the Waterloo School District. But we also do have a very real- But we also do have a very real problem of those students in the middle. So I just want to, you know, voice my concern that we don't get too specialized.
Mm-hmm. For now.
Debbie, in here, I was wondering, as far as the standard and the honors and the core diploma, none of that has actually changed and that is totally explained to students?
Yes, that will be totally explained to the students. That's it. Core diploma is not necessarily advertised, although now I'm talking to all these people about it. But it is, the core and the honors is by application. And when our counselors or teachers or administrators say, this child, you know, all, I wish you had a chance to sit down and read the applications. This last year, I've been a part of that. They are heart wrenching. Students who are living on their own, students who are helping a mother who has cancer, a student who the parents kicked a student out of the home. There are, there is such difficult situations that a small percentage of our students live in. If there's any way that we can give them a special consideration through the core diploma, they still have to meet what's required by law. But we can pair some of that, which we've done and done a really good job with that. Des Moines is actually looking at our, our policy and that. The more we can do for students like that while holding, it's a balance. It's helping our students, but part of my job is also protecting the Waterloo diploma. So it's a very careful balance. And we've talked about a minimum number using the core. We are pushing the honors, making sure people know about the honors as much as possible. That one's, you know, can go off the charts with the number. But it's careful, we have to be very careful because the preponderance of students still need to go for the standard diploma or the honors diploma. And the core is very judiciously used to meet the needs of a, of a student here and there who truly has this incredible barrier to them getting through school. And, and they have to write what that barrier is. That is on the application.
Right. And I guess if maybe, like if I was a parent and I was receiving this, okay, I would think, well, my student could choose which diploma they would want to get. So I just, I just don't want to confuse people that they can look at this and say, well, heck, I'm going to go with the one that's 35 hours.
They would find out very quickly it's not a choice. It's a recommendation and the student then has to make application. And they still have to have four years of school, four years in our high schools. It does not let them out of school early. And they cannot make application until later in this, if, if needed, till later into their sophomore year. And we really are hoping they wait until their junior or senior year for that. So there are, there are, what do I want to say? There are parameters there that we believe that really narrow that down to the use, but we knew we needed something like that. The other thing that you reminded me of, Ms. Flynn, is that you guys need to understand that the change in science changes our policy 602.5, high school graduation. If you approve this tonight, then we're going to have to bring that policy back for approval at some later date in another month or two. So please make sure that you are aware of that as well. It does change our high school graduation expectations. Does not change the number of credits that kids need. But originally, we had physical science and biology, ninth and 10th grade, and then they could take whatever they wanted to take in science. We are now requiring them, you know, it's earth and space science, biology, and then a physical science, one of those choices. We're requiring three years of specified science, which is a little bit different.
Right. And then the only other thing under, on page seven, under the scholarships, I see you have West High and East High listed, but I do know our expo students are eligible for lots of scholarships. I've seen that in, in the paper. So just maybe for future, if we would put a reference to, you know, like even the community foundation site that lists scholarships and so that, because the expo students are definitely eligible for scholarships, but I think if we could direct them where to go.
I will note that. The other thing that you also know from years past is that you approve this on a conceptual basis and we go in and continue to make changes as they are needed. We don't necessarily add courses or, or conceptually change anything, but we correct code numbers and course numbers and add things like that. In fact, tonight, I just had, earlier this afternoon, I had a meeting with ELL and there had been some changes made in that from the copy you got last week. So we continually do that. The most recent copy will be on our, always on our website. But we can go in and see if we can't make some changes to that. I appreciate that. I'll check with Expo to see how they guide their students through that. This was what West and East gave me and so I should have probably said, you know, this has been sitting in here for years, so I probably should have said, hey, where's Expos? But I will go back and do that and see if we can add something.
Why is it not, why don't we do it consistent between the two schools on how we locate that information?
It's just how they choose to do that.
How they give it to us.
You know, East High says, go to this website and West High says they're listed under here. It's how the, how the department and how the school chooses to do that. I don't, we don't micromanage to that level, so.
Dr. Lee, can I ask you one quick question that's somewhat of an aside if we're done here? What, what are we doing for those students who are judicially challenged in addition to at-risk? Those that we expel for a whole school year, who are not getting any credits from anywhere? Are we working with juvenile court services who can help with that?
I believe so. And that actually would be in Cora Turner's wheelhouse to answer. But please know that we make use of our online courses quite a bit in our virtual school and we can provide credit earning opportunities for students through that virtual school.
I, I was told that if a student was expelled, that we don't offer them any credit. Is that correct?
I think we s-
We, they can, we do, not from us directly, but they can go, they can use online resources and continue to take classes.
If they have an IEP, they are offered services based on their IEP. But beyond that, if they're expelled, they're expelled.
Yes.
Yeah.
And then they have to do so many credits, their last so many credits here to get a diploma from.
Yep.
From Waterloo schools.
But the online courses are at their expense, I think.
They are.
I just would like-
Some are more expensive.
Would you like some clarification on that from Ms. Turner? We can provide that to you.
Yes, please, because I'm concerned about when students are expelled because that affects our numbers in the long run.
Sure.
Yeah.
You mentioned counselors earlier, and I think I just need to highlight that again because my children have gone through this Waterloo school system. And I think counselors were underused and underutilized and students suffered because of that in the past. And I just really want to stress that we use our counselors and instruct our counselors, especially even in the seventh and eighth grade level, to be sure that students understand the direction they're going and what they have to do to get to that point. Because without that knowledge, they're not going to be able to choose the correct classes and the correct curriculum to get their goal.
That is true.
Well, and just to, to piggyback on that, that's exactly why we're, for the first time ever, having these eighth grade mandatory meetings for parents and their students to talk about the process of scheduling and registering for high school and what that looks like and what the options are. And that's where Dr. Lindeman headed and I think Jesse, you're going to be out of here shortly. And, and that is why, Mike, I just want to concur that that counseling component and that knowing what is expected and how you get there and what questions to ask and where to go to to get your answers answered, your questions answered is super important. And then so I'm really excited we're doing those.
And maybe there's a technology add that we, we need to pursue with vigor and that would be to relieve some of the counselors from scheduling duties, make scheduling more automated so that they have more time to counsel instead of schedule.
We're working on that. We're working on that. We're looking at ways that we can use our student information system, Infinite Campus, to do that.
Great. All right. Anything further then on the high school planning guide? Clearly, we are not without questions. Mrs. Lee, thank you for answering all of those. We appreciate it.
Well, anytime that you have additional questions or if you walk out and think of them, please know that we are available to you. And anytime that you need more information, we are open to answering that or showing you or helping you understand or whatever. And your suggestions are all welcomed as well. So email me if you see something that needs to be added. I've told everybody that works with us on this. I don't care if it's January, March, middle of the summer, early fall, if you see something in the high school planning guide that just doesn't ring true or it doesn't look right or if it's misspelled or we've got the wrong number or something, let us know. We immediately get it corrected. Takes a lot of eyes on a document this big. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Dr. Lee. Thank you, Crystal. And thank you to the teachers and the four of you that are back here tonight for spending your time and being put on the spot. We sure appreciate it, so. Then all those in favor of recommending the high school planning guide, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.
I'm, I'm going to abstain. I simply don't understand enough about the proposed science changes to pass judgment at this point, so I'm going to abstain.
One abstention. Chair votes aye. Motion carried. Thank you. That will take us then to the next item on our agenda, which is Exhibit I. And the recommended motion is that the board approve the resolutions directing the sale of school infrastructure sales, service and use tax revenue refunding bonds, Series 2017 as presented.
So move.
And a second?
Second.
Thank you. I don't know, you two can arm wrestle for Mike. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Coughlin for a little bit more background on this.
Hey, just to, just to refresh the process that we have gone through in the minutes that are actually in this board agenda from December 12th was the resolution directing the sale of $43.5 million worth of sales tax revenue bonds, refunding bonds, because they're really to, to refinance a $52 million sale that we had back in 2011. Well, this, these motions tonight are to finalize that sale. But what that sale does is sells bonds early because those bonds are not callable or pay off early under that stipulation until July of 2019. But with the interest rates that were available, we could complete this sale now, put that money in escrow, which would then make the payments on the old bonds until they were ready to be paid off. Just kind of, they kind of finance themselves and then we just start paying on the new bonds immediately. So it's kind of a two-year hold process to complete the whole refinancing of the old bonds. But again, to just tell you the value of doing this, we were able to refinance the remaining balance at just a little over half of what we were paying in interest before of 2.65 percent. And we were at 5.02. So we are expecting through the calculations of the Piper Jaffrey of the result savings of approximately $5.3 million in interest. Now, these again are not for any new construction, new projects that we are doing. They are just refinancing the debt that we had from 2011. So the resolutions are purely just to assign Bankers Trust of Des Moines to be the, the holder of the money. And if, to my experience, they handle 99% of all of the bond holdings in the state for schools. There's also just a tax exempt certificate that is approved through this process. And then also for just completing the purchase of the 43.5 in bonds, but after the final interest rates came in, that actually calculated a final number of $43,045,000 even. So, and that's with all of the, all of the fees paid. So that's what was resulting in the bond sale, which will pay off the old bonds, which will then result in the $5 million savings of the interest for the rest of, rest of the time period.
And just to be clear, this isn't for general fund. These are, this is save?
This is all saved money.
Saved money.
Yeah.
Okay. Great.
I would just like to commend Michael and his staff for identifying, explaining and executing this process. If we look at our objectives up here under environment, the second sentence is, secure, organize, and optimize financial resources. So this is a significant contribution to that goal. Please tell your staff, good job.
We're all happy that that happens, so thank you. For sure. And Angie, the numbers aspect of it, not Angie, Rhonda, sorry. She asked the question, said numbers, you know? In simple terms, you know how people refinance the mortgages on their house to add a better interest rate for a shorter period of time? That's kind of just the same, same concept we can say we did here. So save money. Yeah.
Save, save money.
Save, save money. Exactly.
New logo.
Mr. Coughlin, just for our viewers at home, I thought it might be worth reading the three different resolutions. Also, they're not in the actual board recommendation, but I thought it might be worth doing that. And I can do that if, or you can, it doesn't matter, but I thought maybe we should go ahead and get those out there too, so.
Okay, I can read those. First-
Thank you.
First one is resolution appointing Bankers Trust Company of Des Moines, Iowa to serve as trustee approving the trust indenture and authorizing the execution of same. Resolution two, the form of tax exemption certificate to be placed on file and approved. And third resolution is the resolution authorizing and providing for the terms of issuance and securing the payment of $43,045,000 of school infrastructure sales, service and use tax revenue refunding bonds, Series 2017 of the Waterloo Community School District, State of Iowa, under the provisions of Chapter 423E and 423F of the Code of Iowa, and providing for a method of payment of said bonds.
Excellent. Thank you. So that's what the, the board approved, the resolutions, those were the three resolutions included in our. Are there any further questions then for Mr. Coughlin this evening? Seeing none, this also is a roll call vote, so I'm going to start to my left. So all those in favor of the recommended motion approving those three resolutions, please signify by saying aye. Jesse Knight?
Yes.
Angela Weekly?
Aye.
Sue Flynn?
Aye.
Rhonda McCraina?
Aye.
Mike Kinsey?
Aye.
Lauschmidt?
Aye.
And Shanley McNally, chair, votes aye. Motion carried. Thank you all. And thank you, Michael. Appreciate it. The next item on our agenda is funding for 2017, 2016 at-risk education. And that recommended motion is that the Board of Education authorize the district's administration to submit a request to the School Board Rebudget Review Committee, SBRC, in the amount of $3,570,641 for modified supplemental amount, MSA, for the purpose of funding district at-risk programming. And a second?
Second.
Thank you. And discussion. I know that Dr. McNulty's here tonight and Mr. Coughlin's here tonight. If any of you have questions.
Well, I can run through the financing part of it and then program can turn over to Dr. McNulty. Just looking at the exhibit information on page 57, there's really two parts to this. This is the second year that the state has combined this at-risk money together, which is divided into what's called supplemental at-risk funding. And that is a formula that comes through the aid and levy based on free and reduced lunch and enrollment. And the amount, the estimated amount that we know right now is 482,521. And then there's also the modified allowable growth, which is based on the regular program district cost, which is our enrollment times the state cost per pupil. And then 5% of that is what we can apply for, for at-risk funding, modified allowable growth, at-risk funding. And then the requirement of that is that the, the district has to match 25% of that number to get the total. So let me just, if you want to look back on page 59- So let me just, if you want to look back on page 59, that really breaks it out if you want to see the actual details of it, but you can see in the 1718 revenue column, there's the enrollment times the cost per pupil times 5% and then add 25% of it. So the total budget for modified allowable growth is $4,768.56. Of that, the $3,576.41 is what would be raised in property tax and that is estimated to be at $1.34. In addition, then the at-risk supplemental plan is the 482,521, so a total revenue for all at-risk programs of $5,243,377. And then following in the bottom box, the way that we apply for this is by designating our programs, and you can see as you look down the left-hand side, programs that you're familiar with, but it's divided into four different services. And those are the bolded underlined categories and then the programs of Crossroads Summer School, PBDA, Under Credit Recovery, and so on as you go down the list. This is what is put in for the budget for 1718. And we have to do this this early because it has to go through the School Budget Review Committee in time for them to approve it, which then can be processed for our published budget in March and April. So it's, it's kind of a year behind or I guess you could say the other way, it's a year ahead of schedule. We're approving it a year before it happens, but to get it into the tax structure, that's the timing that we have to follow. So that's the breakdown of, of the money, if you've got any questions on that or on any other program issues.
Michael, just to clarify, that top numbers that you talked about there, so 5% gives you the 3.5 million and then the, we have to provide 25% of that amount?
Correct.
So it's 25% of the 5%?
Correct.
Okay.
And if we didn't do this, this would, we would not then have the authority to use this money for these services. Is that correct?
Well, we would just have to spend general fund money.
General fund, but this allows us to-
But this is an allowance of revenue that we can use specifically for at-risk programs.
Absolutely. Which then helps our general funds stay even more flush. Okay.
And quick question. If we identify additional at-risk programming that could help our school district, would we be able to later on add those to it?
We do have flexibility within the process. You know, one of the things that I think that we're getting much better is targeting our, our at-risk dollars. You know, I think under the leadership of Dr. Lindeman in the high schools, it was a big impact on our graduation rate last year focusing on credit recovery. You see also supplemental services available for our family resource support and also for summer school. You know, as we look at advancing, we just can't hope that summer school at the high school level does the trick, that we have to also engage some of our middle school students and even unfortunately some of our elementary students as we lose some state aid at, at the elementary level. So this money has to be certainly well thought out, thought out with our strategic planning process so that we target and use it effectively.
And I ask because I remember, I think when my son was at Carver, there was a program called Tomorrow's Leaders that worked with African-American males ages 11 to 18. I just didn't see it on here. I didn't know if it discontinued, but that's something we could look into later.
Sure.
But I know that was an effective program.
Yeah, and there's, there's a number of other programs out there and, and we worked with the state this last spring in looking at some guidance regarding opportunities to support effective programming. And they're, they're very much willing to work with us, but we have to start this initial process because without the process being started, we have no dialogue.
Yeah.
So the other part of that answer is yes, we can be very flexible with the programming that we offer, but this is the maximum amount of money that we can apply for. So we would have to adjust within this total.
So when we proceed with the certified budget later on and we, we decide 14, 15 males, whatever it is for, as a total levy, this male and a half is included in that number?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
But it can't be, is 134 the max or is that-
134 is the max.
But it could be less.
Could be less. Depends on what, what valuation does.
Sure.
But we would probably choose, if we wanted to pair the total number, we'd probably choose cash reserve or something else to-
Offset.
Well, we would have to have the authority to spend it. Cash reserve would not give us that right to spend it on at-risk. We still have to have the authority by formula to be able to use those dollars.
So this gives us the authority, but my point is if, if we, if we want to make sure the total number is under X, we can always pair the cash reserve levy.
Correct. Yes, yeah, no, I understand what you're asking, yes.
All right. Few more numbers for everybody. Are there any other questions? Where are they, Mr. McNulty? Okay. Great. Well, there might be other questions, but on pertaining directly to item J. So, great, then all those in favor of the recommended motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye. Motion carried. That takes us to the next item on our agenda, which is Exhibit K. And this is the second reading. We had the first reading back in December of these. And the recommended motion is the board approve the following policies: board member conflicts of interest, school board member ethics, gifts to the Board of Education members, and meeting notices and minutes.
So we-
Thank you. And a second?
Second.
Thank you. If I recall, if I can go back to December, I think, and still pull this out, that Tara Thomas spoke that evening about, this was really cleaning up language and kind of making sure that we were in alignment with IASB and other things. There wasn't a lot of content change, but like the word board had been capitalized and we took it down to lowercase, as you guys can see all those, but for our viewers at home. So it is those 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 different policies. And I don't know if anybody has any further questions on those? Okay. Well, then seeing none, all those, all those in favor of approving the policy changes, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye. Motion carried. Obviously, we're not going to do our superintendent's report or she's not going to phone it in at this point, so she said we'll get, we'll get a double dose in two weeks when, when we're all back together. And so with that, I'm going to start, I'm going to go the other way from roll call. I'm going to go to my right and I'm going to start with Lyle Schmidt tonight on board comments. Okay. Thanks, Lyle. Wait! I thought you were jotting down notes while we were talking, so, great. All right, Mike Kinsey?
I don't have anything tonight. Thank you.
Okay. Rhonda?
Happy New Year.
Thank you. Sue Flynn?
I did have one comment as far as if any of our viewers would like to make donations.
Sure, mic on. Nope. There we go.
If any of our viewers would like to make donations to the Kingsley Group, can we get that information? How, who should they call? Pam or?
Sure.
Call the superintendent's office and we will take any donation, donations of animal books? We will take donations of cash, money. We would just love for those little kids-
Just no animals.
Yeah, no animals, just books.
Just no, we don't want any, any ferrets or polar bears or anything like that, but-
No ring-billed lemurs.
No, but seriously, if you would like to, it's an awesome group to donate to and I just, as Rhonda said, I'm going to send some money and just, just to see them succeed and the look on their eyes. So contact Pam and the superintendent's office and that's 291-43-
433.
433. I'm off, sorry. Go ahead.
433-1874.
Okay, got it. 433-1874 and let's give those kids two aims. Thank you.
Awesome. All right. Anything further, Sue?
That's it.
All right, Angie?
I just want to remind all the viewers and students and parents that MLK Day is coming up and he fought so much for us to have education and for us to volunteer and contribute to our community. So as we have the day off, think of it as a day on. What can you do for the community that you live in and not as a day off in making sure that you can further your education and help out your fellow man?
Thank you.
And woman.
Do you want to talk about Hidden Figures?
I kind of thought I shouldn't, but I guess I can. Also, the STEM group that came in December and, and talked about what they are preparing to do, they are wanting to bring at least 200 students and they would welcome any more students to Hidden Figures on MLK Day as their, as their gift to service from 9 to 1. If you are interested in that information, I know that I can get the information to Pam and you can call her at that same number, 433-1874. I memorize numbers easy.
I always call them the best part.
And there's a, so that Mr. Dick Urban, Urban, is that how you say his name? Can get a final count there. Just try, they really, really want to make sure that they're able to impact especially women and students of color to be inspired by this Hidden Figures, which we've talked about now for three-
Three meetings.
Three meetings, so.
Just don't call it Hidden Figures.
And yes, Kevin Costner is in it, however, the lead is Raji P. Henson.
Yeah.
So.
And it's also important for non-minority students to learn this part of their history because I don't think this was in the history books. And so, you know, Lyle, you know, I agree with you to the standpoint that some things are left out, maybe, possibly. And so we want other students to come and see that part of history where women of color were, were very critical and instrumental in sending Americans to-
The movement.
John Glenn asked for them specifically.
That's right, so.
Yes, he did.
And Rhonda and I will be there to help chaperone some of the students.
Oh, no, I'm not chaperoning nobody's kids.
She is. It's on her calendar.
Oh, you guys made me laugh.
I think Torique Don, so you never heard.
It's really good. It's really good, so. All right, Jesse?
I got none after this.
We've obviously lost control.
Okay, but I think we need to reiterate the eighth grade meetings, the times and places.
I was just about to do that. Yep. The times and places are posted on our Waterloo Community Schools. There are six of them, I believe. So the first one is tonight, or four of them? There's five. There's one down here.
Yeah, I said there's five.
There's five.
Five.
Five, not six, sorry. I know there's one down here.
One each middle school and one makeup.
Yep.
Yep.
So we will get those up on our website or I don't have them off the top of my head. They're in an email somewhere.
They've been on social media too.
We've posted them a lot. They're on the, they are on our Facebook page, I know, because I've seen them. And there was an ad in yesterday's Courier about them or a placement about them, so.
And on each school's website.
Yep, and they're on each individual school. So make sure for that. I also just want to remind all of our parents of high school students that finals are next week. They do matter. So please make sure your kids get rested and get there for those couple of days. They're, you know, they test over a two-day period, so just make sure they get there. And also that our next meeting is not until January 23rd. And with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
Great. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. We're adjourned. Good night. Thank you.
One more.
Lyle?
For my daughter.